Going to begin the open mic session, which is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views or matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people's time permits. The chair reserves the right to limber, limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in a high school in the Lynn Public Schools District and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the com, speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. Anyone here for open mic?
Yeah.
Anyone for open mic? Yep. If you could just state your name and address for the record. And deputy, if you, yeah.
Hello all, good evening. My name is Yuri Sanchez Rio, 205 Corwin Circle, Lynn, Mass. 01905. I am just here to address everyone. I am extremely happy to see everyone today because we were able to have an amazing win. And I just want to advocate for a lot of the children in our districts, in all the schools, because not only have they done an amazing job of advocating for themselves, they also advocated for all of you. And they advocated for all those who they will be leaving behind when they graduate high school. And that's my daughter as well. She goes to Druids. And it's amazing to know that we are forging a path for them, but that also we have to take in consideration the fact that they were in armor a couple of days ago. They put themselves on the line, school-wise. They put their parents in jeopardy, some of them, because of their legal status and showing up and, and being brave. So if they were able to be brave for us, we should be able to look at what they're talking about. And they're talking about, I mean, my niece, my daughter, my nephew, their friends, and the children that I've seen grow up. They deserve better. Um, I know that this win doesn't count for extracurricular, um, in many places, but they, that's what they're asking. They're asking to be considered as they are considerate. Um, and I think being able to look beyond dollar signs, they did. So they lost time at school, they lost time at work, and they were very brave. And I was very proud to be able to say that they were, there were going to be zero children allowed. And I pushed, and I pushed, thinking my daughter could be that child. And I said, give me more. They gave me three. I said, no, give me more. They gave me eight. I pushed nine in. I ended up with eleven. They hold, they were holding signs that we had printed an hour and a half ago before the meeting. They were scared. They were crying. They would come out to me to hug me. I couldn't break down for them. I did break down after, because I saw what was at stake. So I ask you guys to please take in consideration, when these youth make an ask, they're not asking because they want. They asking because they deserve. And deserving goes beyond what they deserve, because they have done what many did not do. There's a lot of people that were missing in that room, but they weren't. And not on my watch, because my daughter wrote a statement. She's nine. Fifteen minutes, she gave me a statement to send in to the Board of Education. She sees me, so she knows how to act. They see us, that's how they're going to act. And when I say they, I talk to all the youth that have been representing Lynn. So for that, I first want to thank you guys, and I also want to ask consideration when they ask is because they need. And I, I want to be very clear that this is just with gratitude that we ask that you listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Share your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Imani De Jesus, and I live on nineteen Lily Street. Now, I know a lot about the KIP expansion. I just as, I was supposed to be just as one of the many other kids that were supposed to attend that meeting. But my mother was afraid due to the fact that I would miss school. I'm a senior, I can't mess up my opportunities, I can't mess up my chances, I can't lose my scholarships. But I knew that I wanted to represent. And even though I couldn't go in person, I wrote a comment. I had my nephew write a comment. He's ten. He doesn't really care that much for politics, but he knew that it was the right thing to do. And I feel like that just showed an example of what a kid from Lynn is. We are raised by some of the most hardworking, dedicated people. We are taught to fight, not lie still and take a beating. And I think that's one thing I would like for all of us, especially the board, but for most adults to understand, is that, yeah, we're children. Yeah, we may joke around and have fun, but when it impacts our future and the future of our siblings, our cousins, our nephew or nieces, we will stand. And I feel like that was just one example that showed the strength of our character, our integrity, and how intelligent we really are. And it meant the world to me, even if I couldn't go, I would send text messages throughout the day, being like, hey, what are they saying? Hey, how's the meeting? I want to be involved, even if it's just through a screen. And I remember the, the time I got that text, it didn't go through. I wanted to cry right then and there, but I'm in school. I can't sit there and go to the bathroom and draw my eyes. But knowing that I had the power, even if I wasn't there physically, and I think knowing that my words impacted them in such a way where it may have not been the greatest, but my grandmother always had a saying, it doesn't matter who you talk to, it doesn't matter their position or their stance, they're human. And they can either do two things, listen to you or ignore you. And that's all I could do. And I spoke honestly and truthfully, just as so many others. That is what being a person from Lynn is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Yep, if you state your name and address, please.
I live at two fifty-three Chestnut Street, and I go to Lynn English, and I'm part of the Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Coalition. And today I have an essay I'd like to present. On Tuesday, we showed up, we stood together, holding our signs and making it clear that the people of Lynn refuse to be ignored when it comes to decisions that affect our schools. And when the vote came down, the board made the right choice, rejecting KIP's expansion by a six to four vote. But let's not pretend this was some kind of victory lap. This vote wasn't just about stopping KIP. It was a commitment to Lynn Public Schools, and it was a statement that our district, our students, and our educators deserve better. And now that that immediate threat has been handled, we're here to make sure that commitment doesn't get forgotten. Because this fight was never just about saying no to KIP, it was about demanding a yes to real investment in our schools. Right now, our extracurricular programs are being held together by students and educators who are forced to find their own solutions to problems that shouldn't exist in the first place. Cheerleading is the only athletic program without guaranteeing transportation. Academic clubs like mock trials, science team, and theater are left without funding for travel, making it harder for students to compete and represent their schools. And even when transportation is provided, it is often, often unreliable, forcing teams to arrive late to games and events. The problems don't stop there. Our athletes are playing with broken equipment and outdated uniforms that haven't, that have been reused for years. Club advisors and coaches are expected to pay for essential materials out of pocket. Students miss out on opportunities because there are simply isn't a budget for things like guest speakers, competition fees, or necessary supplies. And the teachers who dedicate their time to running these programs receive low stipends if they're paid at all. So we're not here to remind you of your commitment, we're here for, with solutions. We need a dedicated budget for the extracurricular transportation, one that ensures every student has access to opportunities their schools provides, regardless if they play a sport or participate in an academic club. We need clear, accessible hun, funding for equipment, materials, and uniforms, so students aren't forced to make what's due, what's less, what's left over. We need a process that allows club advisors and coaches to request necessary resources without jumping through endless hoops. We need to raise stipends for advisors, so teachers aren't discouraged from supporting these programs. We fought for this district when it mattered the most. We put in the work to protect our schools, and now we expect you to do the same. That means transparency, that means listening to students and educators, and most of all, that means following through, because we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Great. State your name and address.
My name is Alsono Forchapp, one forty-nine President Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. And I'm a senior at Lynn English High School. Recently, we saw the mark of an unprecedented attack upon Lynn Public Schools. And thankfully, because of the collective effort of everyone on this board, the students and the people sitting behind me, we staged a successful defense. That is the power of the people of Lynn, the power to come together against an issue and fight collectively to solve said issue. If there's one lesson we need to take away from the KIP expansion, is there needs to be immediate change within the Lynn Public School system. We, especially the students, have proven time and time again that we are determined to be the forces that are here to create that necessary change. However, we can only win this battle with your help. As a member of the science team at Lynn English High School, for many years, there have been critical moments where I have wanted nothing more but to quit, particularly after streaks of constant losses. That is especially true within our engineering events, where we have to work with mediocre equipment while other teams have the privilege of working with proper machinery and an extensive array of materials. Put yourselves in my shoes. No, put yourselves in the shoes of all the Lynn students who have the potential for greatness, yet that spark is never lit. While we have learned determination and self-initiative by going out to create and find our own opportunities, once in a while, we would like to feel special. Why can't the students of Lynn be as special as the students of Marblehead or Somerville? Why shouldn't the students of Lynn feel pride for their schools despite the victories or the losses? Once in a while, it'd be nice to feel appreciated for the hard work we have put in despite our circumstances. Together, we can work together to fix this issue. We're not asking for fully-fledged engineering rooms, but why not start by giving us funding to upgrade our current equipment? Why not give us funding for new books, new materials, new gear, and new attire? We are the change that Lynn requires, and together, we can work towards a better future, a future where other schools look towards us as the model and not to diminish us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else for open mic? Yep. State your name and, uh, address.
Good afternoon. My name is Lillian Idowu.
Good evening.
I'm a senior at Lynn English, and my address is two twenty-four Fayette Street. Throughout my time at the Lynn Public Schools, I have come across many aspiring young students like myself, students who come to school every day with the hope of getting high-quality education as well as extracurricular active, activities. Unfortunately, this is not the case for us. A lot of us struggle to find clubs and sports that support our goals due to a great lack of funding. During my sophomore year, I developed an interest for soccer, in soccer. I went to practice every day over the summer leading to the fall season. Despite my dedication to getting better at the sport, I didn't see any progress, because my school did not have the proper resources to train us. I remember the feeling of stepping onto the opposing school's field, knowing we'd lose to them, not because we're not good enough, but because we did not have the proper equipment to train us. We worked so hard as a team just to lose every game. For this reason, I was unable to stay on the team. This is what a lot of other students in our district face. We are unable to pursue, pursue the extracurricular activity that we love, because our school does not invest in us. We are so underfunded that a lot of times, our teachers have to spend money out of their own pockets to, to provide some things for our clubs. We do not deserve this. Lynn Public School students are ambitious. I have seen the way my peers care about their education and their chosen sports or clubs. We are so frustrated by the situation of things that we constantly advocate for change. On February twenty-fifth, a couple of other Lynn Public School students and I were present at the Board of Education meeting, which would deny the expansion of KIP and save us millions of dollars. Instead of going to school, we made sure to attend the meeting. I can assure you that our presence there was impactful, powerful, and effective. This shows you that we are willing to fight for what we deserve. If you give us what we need, you will see that we are exceptional. Thank you.
Anyone else for open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Yep. State your name and address.
Hi, everyone. I hope you're not too, too tired of seeing me again. Um, my name is Gabe. Um, I'm organizer, an organizer with Neighbor to Neighbor. I'm here with the, the youth team tonight. Just want to say, appreciate all the work that folks put in to, to keep eight million dollars a year in our, our public schools this week. Um, we were glad to, to fight with you all and to show up there and, and make sure that, that we don't lose the funding that we so desperately need to hold on to. We clearly need more as, as we can see. And yeah, just saying that we are here, probably you, we know that you're hearing us, we know that, you know, these issues are important to, to our team. Um, but I think, you know, we're here because we want to keep, we want to work together, we want to make this happen. We want, I, I think these, the, they know better than anyone else how, how we need to address these, these issues, and we want to make sure that we can work at, at this collaborati, collaboratively with you all, um, and bring them to the table with you to have those conversations, to navigate this as we go into the budget season. Um, and some of the things are not budget-related as well, so we want to be able to, to be in full collaboration with you all to, to make it possible, because we know that you're dedicated to students' wellbeing and they, they have the knowledge of, of how we need to approach this. So thank you guys for hearing us again, and we'll, we'll keep showing up, and, um, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Uh, anyone else for open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic, and we will close the open mic portion of the evening, and call to order the fourth regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Satterwhite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
President, and I would also like to welcome Amanda Hughes from Lynn Classical High School, our student representative. Well, wait till you hear about Amanda. Amanda is a remarkable individual, both academically and in extracurricular activities. As a high-achieving student, Amanda has excelled in numerous advanced placement courses as well as early college courses, showcasing her intellectual curiosity and commitment to academic excellence. She consistently maintains an impressive academic record, earning her high marks in even the most challenging subjects. Her current GPA is a four point six. And she is ranked second in a class of four hundred and eighty-five students. In addition to her academic pursuits, Amanda has shown strongly issued qualities by serving as class president all four years of high school. She is captain of the swim team and volleyball team, which just further demonstrates exceptional teamwork, leadership, and sportsmanship. She was awarded the Harvard Book Award as an AP Scholar, the president of the newspaper club. She also enjoys giving back to her community as she packs lunches for the local shelter in our community, is the boys volleyball manager, and is on the student council, to name a few. Amanda will be attending Brynmar, and we will be playing volleyball. We're, we're honored to have you here, Amanda. Thank you. Thank you. All right, if, for those who are able, please, uh, rise for a salute to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Next is the minutes.
Um, motion to accept the curriculum subcommittee meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and, uh, motion to accept the third regular meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
You did excellent.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next is appointments.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to share some wonderful news. One of our current principals, the principal of Shoemaker, Mr. Christopher Norkin, uh, will be the new principal of City Arts and Sciences Academy, effective April first of this year. We're very, very excited for this change and for, uh, Mr. Norkin to be able to begin the process of opening our new, um, STEAM Academy and making sure that he is welcoming students that are accepted, as well as doing orientations with the family, hiring teachers and staff, um, and eventually leading up to the opening of the school in the fall. So, um, we're very, very proud to be able to make that announcement this evening.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Is he here?
Is he here?
No.
No. I'm sure he's watching at home. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chris.
All right. Next item, we have a presentation on transportation.
Speaker to the mic.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joannie Castillo. I'm the transportation manager for Lynn Public Schools. And we are here, and I'm here to do a presentation on how we're supporting the transportation department, being supportive of student arrival on time. Technical problems, huh? That's always really fun.
All right, here we go.
Um, the, our team is composed of myself, um, transportation manager, as well as Deb McKenna, Heidi Durrell, both assistant database managers, as well as Rachel Alara, our computer, um, operator. And they all back here, supporting me. The transportation department is responsible, um, just to give a little overview of what the transportation, um, oversees. Uh, we are responsible for the, what we call the ins, ins, inside sped students, which are students that are determined by the, uh, special ed department that have required transportation inside the city of Lynn, as well as our outside students, um, outside sped students that also require transportation in their programs is house out of Lynn, out, outside of Lynn, such as in maybe Beverly, Pevity, Chelsea, Boston, just to name a few. We also oversee the transportation of for homeless and DCF students in our cities and outside our cities, um, students in five oh four, uh, five oh four plans that are identified by our compliance, um, departments, as well as we oversee the regular ed, um, kindergarten students that their, um, kindergarten program is house size, outside of their, uh, district program, such as the, the students from Ford to Ingalls and from Tracy to Soul. We also oversee old charter's requests for athletics and the finance department, as well as, uh, we support the after-school programs as well, such as for the Boys and Girls Club, um, Girls Inc., Salvation Army, um, In Camp Fire, that is, uh, house at Shoemaker. We also responsible for the sped, the special ed, um, charter's request, which is our field trips, internship, and the specials events that the, uh, transportation, that require transportation for our special ed student that are such a team coach in the life skills. We also oversee the MVTAs. Those are students that are in, in life skills program and that they are using the MBT, the M seven, to do regular transportation throughout the day, as well as we oversee the parents' reimbursements, and those are parents that decided to updow of our transportation for them to start transporting their students, and by DASIS guideline, uh, they get paid by mile, which is sixty-seven cents per mile. Some of the measurements that we have done, um, along the side with my department and Deputy Superintendent Marisol, um, in September, we started a life sheet, uh, allowing for all principals to be able to log in, uh, buses' arrival at schools and also departure, just to see, to have our assistant that would allow us to measure or have an understanding of how late buses are arriving or arriving at the end of the day for students to be, um, going home. With that, also, we decided to take that weekly data, send it to our vendor, specifically NRT, so then to look at routes and be able to see where routes needed to be adjusted to make it more efficiency in our students to arrive on time. In November, NRT started a new program called, which is launching a new program called Beacon Connect, uh, which is like a call center to help facilitate, um, incident report to come on a quicker time matter, to have a quicker, um, return when it comes to bidium requesting, but also added, uh, what they called, added new dispatcher, so we will not be on hold for longer calls. However, that was just an intent since they outsourced a lot of our program to, to, uh, people in Columbia. In November, um, in January, we started heavily, we had, uh, weekly, we started having weekly meetings to meet with NRT and talk about our challenges, one in specifically in January eight, where we met, uh, with the BP, Kathy Spinett from NRT, um, and we voiced our concerns just to let her know where we stand and where we needed to take more procedures and measures to make sure that our students were arriving more on time, um, and address any ongoing issues that we might have when it comes to transportation. We'd, um, we also had met with the nursing department since, uh, in teams, at LVTI teams, sometimes they are, they require, there's a nurse bus that require, uh, a nurse, and if their nurse called out, our students would be left behind due to the medical, so we met with our nursing department as well as NRT, so if their nurses will be out, we put procedures in place that we will collaborate to put our nurses to make sure that students were, uh, in school and wouldn't miss at the school. Uh, we also had a safety meeting, January third, where we invited Christina Koella. She gave a training to the monitors and drivers of the expectations that we wanted to see when it came to children's bu, on the bus, and what would, how they would support our special ed students, and that went really, really good. Thank you, Christina. We also, in support to help NRT in February, we decided to, uh, get their flyers of recruitment, share it in our platforms to make sure that we were helping them with their recruiting staff, so they wouldn't have so much reverb and door, making sure that it was always equipped with staff, so our students will show up also on time. And also in February, we decided to hold them accountable by enforcing the contract penalty by any buses that are being late, and those are, we are going through the contract, and as we log, um, late buses, we are, uh, silly, in penalties as well, too. I spent a year for last year, uh, year, uh, FY twenty-four, was eleven million, nine hundred thirteen, six hundred and sixty-four, with thirty-nine stacks. Hopefully, we'll keep it at that level, right? So our future goal, our, our department is always thinking- So our future goal, our department is always thinking how we could be created and do more efficient things for our, we realize that throughout the year, NRT, which is our main vendor, has, we have outgrown them. They are, has, not only us as the city of the Lynn, if you go to other cities such as Salem, Chelsea, that I've been in contact with multiple other transportation directors, they realize that just their, NRT's overcapacity to serve majority of our students. So in collaboration with my team and Deputy Superintendent Marisol here, we decided to be creative for the new contract that is going to be over by the end of this school year, and decided that one of the things that we wanted to do is to spend our contract, span our contract with multiple vendors. So we won't be have the dependency of only counting our NRT that does the majority of routing, but having smaller vendor to come to the table and support our students. As well as we decided that, that we will do that by identifying much of the schools that are more need and are experiencing more ongoing issues on a regular basis. By expanding the transportation team and expanded our vendors, we will be able to be more proactive instead of reactive with all the situations that have been going on, specifically where our vendor, NRT, and if you have any questions or you'd like to elaborate, we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pena, member Reed.
Thank you for the presentation, Johani. Really appreciate it. And now, thank you for all the work you did. We know that when you took the department, there was a lot of stuff going on, and we were advocating for get some administrators. I'm glad to see you have a database, database manager. I had a question for the opt-out for the parent, the reimbursement. Is that it only if a parent qualifies, if their child qualifies for transportation?
Correct. So if a parent's receiving is determined by the special ed or by 504 or any other condition that I said qualify for transportation, they will be able to opt out if they decide to, it's better for them to transport their students versus...
Okay, yeah, versus using the, and I, and I, and I really appreciate all the efforts you're doing, because there's a lot of things that are, you know, beyond your control, you know, with the companies and things that are going on. And I, I really appreciate you enforcing the contract with payment and penalizing them. I think it's really, you know, puts a, the match under the, you know, let's, let's get it moving. But I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Member Reed.
Just to echo Member Pena's statement, I, you know, when I'm out in the community, sort of, some of the most concerns are here around transportation. I know it's not all of you. You go above and beyond, and it's a very difficult thing, and a lot of it has to do with the vendors. So thank you so much. Really appreciate that. The first question I had was in regards to the contract. I was very delighted to see that we are enforcing that as well. Was that something that's been in the contract the whole time, and we just sort of haven't been tracking it, or, and then we just decided enough was enough? Is that sort of?
Correct. So NRT being our biggest vendor, and is the vendor that we will continue, they are the biggest in the North Shore. You know, we've been trying to collaborate as much as we can, as much as we've been able to do. Eventually, we exhausted all our, you know, negotiated, Deputy Superintendent could speak about it, by supporting them, by putting things in play, that I think it's time that they understand that we mean business.
Appreciate that. And the other question I had was, I've heard of a few incidents of things happening on buses, or kids getting off buses, or some other unfortunate incidents. What is the process of letting the parent know and that type of thing?
So usually, an investigation is being brought up. So if any incident comes, either the parent's voices, or either the vendor itself will let us know. We request video, we request audio, we follow up with deputies in the schools, we follow up with the families, and investigation is thoroughly, and we actually ask for any support, any feedbacks, our leaders to make sure that things are equitable for all our parents.
And you talked to NRT about that after the fact?
Correct.
And kind of say like, what happened?
Of course. That's, that's the investigation that takes place by not only taking their word or taking a statement, but also requesting videos, requesting audio, so we could confirm and collaborate, that what their statement is saying is also collaborating with the videos and audios that we could both, we could actually hear.
Thank you. And then, sorry, one last question, just clarification. So when you're talking about sort of the expansion, the goal is to keep, obviously we have to keep, yeah, North Running Transportation, but then fill in some of the gaps with other smaller companies, is that?
Correct. So we will, we want to go and research more smaller vendors and see how they could come back and support, and support us. We feel that if we bring more vendors to the table, eventually through our year, three year contract, they will be able to also grown and be more competition also with NRT.
In addition, that would minimize the amount of transportation we need from NRT, in hopes that that will help them get to other schools on time, and our students arriving at the same time as all students.
And is this something that we've done in the past when we renew contracts? Do we always put it out to bid, or is it just a standard procurement process? Or we've been with North Running Transportation for a long time?
So we created the first McKinney-Vento contract, and we expanded it out because it was the first contract. However, all the contracts that have already been in place since I've been there has been exclusively for NRT and CJ's, which have been the companies that have been out long. We are 32B exempt, so we are able to have a little bit more leeway when it comes to that, but it takes time to actually research and actually have vendors that will actually have their equipment to support, such as like an investigation, do they have cameras? Do they have audio? How do we do things? How do we, how do our procedures are put in place? And what are the expectation for us as a city and the responsibility with our students?
Thanks so much for everything.
You're welcome, anytime.
I had Member Casillas, and then Member Gailey.
Fuck that.
Sure. So Deputy Gores has been looking at the enforcement of the contract, as well as looking at what then would be the, some of the penalties, based on what they haven't been able to accomplish. I think the transportation team makes it look easy, right? Because they're on top of the phone calls and responding to parents. But NRT is, you know, unresponsive when it comes to just basic communication, location of the buses, being able to actually track, you know, buses through equipment, which has been requested in the past, as well as some of the extracurricular activities, right? They cannot turn the buses around on time to make a pickup back at the school, to then take students to a competition, or a football game, or, you know, a cheer, whatever the case may be. So it becomes very difficult for us to continue to justify not enforcing a contract, because they do have a significant part of the business, right? So they've been very creative and working together on how can we have vendors that are specifically either for the elementary pickups, or for the activities pickups, or for our middle and high school students, right? So that we won't have to rely as heavily on the same company, hopefully next year. But at this time, yes, we are looking into the, you know, what legal repercussions NRT would be subject to, because they haven't fulfilled the terms of their contract.
Member Casillas. First of all, thank you. This wonderful presentation, this is probably the first time in a while, we, this is a pretty robust layout. I love the graphs, I love the information, the, the structure, the organization. Very, very clean, very easy to digest, prior to coming in, like the packet, it was really nice to go through. The, many questions were asked already that I kind of had on my purview, but I kind of have a, just some, just, if, if I could just get some clarification on the reduction strategy. So if we're going to decide to reduce our vendor dependency, while we look to expand, are we going to, I guess, you know, special ed, there's like prioritize, prioritize transportation, right? That's probably where like a lot of our, like, focus probably will be going, right? NRT will be focused on the most important? Is that, is that going to be kind of like the thought? Like, just so I could, because I know 504 is IEPs, it's in their lang, like, I think there's, there's, there's language, right? Contractual, that we have to provide transportation. So could you just kind of walk me through as we look to expand, to make sure like that's going to be focused on still?
So as Johani mentioned, we are 32B exempt when it comes to special ed transportation. The majority of our transportation is for our special ed students. And so in increasing multiple vendors, that would mean, for example, identifying three elementary schools that constantly have late buses, right? And then having a vendor service those three elementary schools. So then that takes away a number of routes from NRT, which may then allow them to be more on time to the rest of the schools. You see what I'm saying?
Increases the flexibility.
Correct. Correct. So we experimented with the McKinney-Vento bid process. Johani ran that really well, and we got about three vendors that we are using to support our homeless students that may be living temporarily in other cities and need to be transported, and that has changed dramatically their attendance as a result. And so moving forward with this contract expiring June 30th of 2025, we want to research that. I mean, we've given NRT a lot of support, you know, we're not saying we're perfect. We identified some areas that we needed to work harder on and manage better across departments, welcome center, special education, transportation, schools. So, so we came up with a good system of information tracking to ensure that NRT has the most up-to-date information. And then we also gave leniency prior to us arriving, myself arriving to LPS, but also Johani felt the brunt of that time when many employers were low in their workforce, and they still have not recovered. And so we're, we're looking to see vendors who have more stable employees and reliable employees that will come to work regularly. And then also seeing how can we identify other members maybe in our community, because the smaller vendors may not have monitors, but who are those that are already in our school community that could play that role? And potentially, now we have much more of a community focus on that bus. Staff member that knows the child, knows the families, right? Communication happens, there's attention to what's happening on there, because every, the monitor is aware of what those needs are on the bus. So those are our goals.
Okay. Well, so will we be looking to hire additional staff or increase staff, like any capacity to alleviate some of the communication issues? Because I feel like it must be an incredible, I don't know how to put it, it must be very exhausting every day statistically to take on those calls, that I could imagine, because it's, communication is so critical, especially for our special ed students. Like if, if they're, if NRT, or if there's a capacity issue, or if there's a miscommunication, or even if, if a kid's sick, or if you guys don't know, you show up, like, I've heard from so many constituents this year around transportation, just, I feel like impossible conflicts. Like, I don't, it's like, it's very, like, three different ways it could have went. So I think, I feel like, I appreciate that you guys are working really hard, but what are some of the ideas around that?
So at the moment, we're still assessing, right, whether we can move to some of these other vendors that can fulfill not only our routes, but that can also provide us with information when we're trying to communicate with parents. Because adding, we could add 10 staff members, right? If we had the, you know, the capacity to do that, and they still wouldn't have answers, because the, the actual transportation company isn't providing us with answers. It's not our, our team that, they, they can't get answers from them either. So the, the issue is not our team that can't provide the answers, is that we can't track the bus, and we also don't, if we don't know where it is, we can't tell a parent that it's two minutes away or an hour away. So that, we're changing the providers, right? Hopefully, we'll solve much of this problem.
And so those would be some of the characteristics or asks in, in, in the contract for these other vendors that we would need in order to facilitate the multi-vendor approach for the district?
I've, I, I did see some models of communication, like apps, technology, before I came on. I was kind of seeing how some of the other districts are doing it. I think as we look for other vendors, like the people, folks who are tapping into, just, communication is, it's very, it's, it's a very important piece of the operation. I think there's technology, too. There's apps, updates that could happen to clean that up, especially once, like you said, when you become more flexible, and you, I like that strategy, when you make it a little bit more smaller, so it's more personable. You get a familiar face on the bus, the bus monitor, like you get kind of more community-based relationships, right? So it's very important. Also, there's so much to that, too, like your first encounter, like, I don't know, I loved, I used to love the bus ride to school. I took the MBTA, so I took the, I was at Central Square, but I still liked it. I enjoyed that. It was, it was a good learning experience for me, so. I don't have to ride the bus no more, though. I got a car now. So, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Member Gailey.
First of all, thank you so much for this presentation, and I was really happy to see you're being proactive rather than reactive, because I believe, I only had really one person contact me about their bus being, a special ed student's bus being late, and I think it was because of Lynnfield Street getting done over, and it slows the buses up. And I tried to point that out, but the person was not happy with me with that answer. But I'm really happy to see that you're thinking and working towards using different vendors, because then the students that are in the back of the room that come in and talk to us about not having buses to go to after-school programs, like the superintendent just mentioned, great minds think alike, because I was thinking the same thing, that it will make it easier. But can you go over the rules for like, if they're on a school bus after school, like for a project, like going sharing somewhere? Like, what's the behavior supposed to be like? What's that expectation?
The behavior of students or?
Of students, of students.
So usually, it's a charter request. We expect the same behavior for all our students. We understand that regularized students are not the same as special ed students.
Right.
So we expect them to be respectful on the bus, we expect them to sit properly, we expect them not to eat, because we don't want them to choke as the buses are motioned. And we expect them to be respectful of the material of the bus, as well as the adults that are overseeing them.
The students are held to the same discipline expectations and the student code of conduct. That code of conduct travels with them in any related activity that is school-sponsored. So on the bus, at the locations, in our schools. And so when students do not meet those expectations, then suspension from that service does happen.
So to be clear, that next year with multiple vendors, they'll probably be able to have after-school buses to help them be transported to games.
So it will be more, it will be more for our special ed students, since to alleviate NRT, to be able to be more responsive for our athletics charter, because they are already in a contract that went out already, and they've been into it.
So the contract with the NRT vendor is not comprehensive to all of our transportation. It's, it's a contract specifically for, we have a transportation contract for McKinney-Vento Transportation, for special education separately, for athletics and arts and extracurricular activities separately. But a vendor can bid to multiple projects, contracts, and get awarded those contracts, and then, as we are here today, not be able to meet the requirements of all those contracts. So it's up to us to now decide what are our next steps to ensure access for our students.
Well, I just want to say thank you again. I, you were like one of the best hires we made for this particular transportation department. You have been impeccable, and you continue to work to make our bus companies successful and meet the needs of all our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to add, on the subject, thank you as well for the presentation, the whole transportation team. It's a critical function, clearly, to get students to school and to, and to where they need to be. And it is complicated. And I think it's worth noting that some of the issues that we're talking about are really being felt acutely in other communities as well, that, you know, that there is a real transit issue in this sector. And I so appreciate our team being proactive in the way that they are and tackling this head-on. I've made this point before to the committee. And I think it's worth noting again, just the particular implications of the finances of transportation and how that sort of plays out on the city side and the school side. Because I think it's just important context for everybody to have, that transportation does not count towards net school spending, right? So it means that it impacts the city's budget in a different way. Because, you know, we've been fortunate to have pretty significant increases in Chapter 70 funding over the last few years with the Student Opportunity Act. And the city finances are just in a totally different, you know, world with respect to the level of increases. And so there's just a different sort of pressure on it and implications for what's happening on the city side. So Johnny and her team and the school department have been, you know, really helpful and sort of helping us think that through together so that we can, you know, try to be as, ultimately, it's all the same budget, right? We're all on the same team. And trying to think about how we understand and manage those implications. So thank you for that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Next item, we have a field trip request for Lynn Tech Grade 11 to go to Canobie Lake Park in Salem on June 16th. What's the recommendation of the superintendent?
The recommendation is to approve the field trip to Tech, Grade 11 to Canobie Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire on June 16th, 2025.
Motion to move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice Habit. Request to accept a donation of $1,055.15 from Snap Mobile to LVTI Wrestling Team. Recommendation?
The recommendation is to accept the donation for the wrestling team, the Tech Wrestling Team.
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice Habit. $2,000 from Cummings Properties to Ford School Grade 3 for field trips and activities.
The recommendation is to accept the donation for Ford School Grade 3 Field Trips and Activities.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Nice Habit. Next is a request to transfer funds for the new principal of City Arts and Sciences Academy.
Mr. Kevin McHugh will share. There is a document in your packets with the actual transfer request.
Yes, so as earlier, we approved the hiring of the new principal for the City Arts and Science Academy. Since he's going to be starting April 1st through June 30th, there's going to need to be a transfer to cover those costs. And then next year, budget, in FY '26 budget, his cost will be included from there on. So I just need to cover the cost with a transfer to continue, you know, pay him the difference. And you can see that the, I recommended a motion. So the cost to cover it from April through June 30th is $36,750. So I have a recommended motion to cover that, to transfer it to the principal, from the long-term substitute line to the principal salary account to cover those costs.
Attorney, Greenspan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The appointment of the principal is within the discretion of the superintendent. But the compensation by statute is still set by the committee. So the other thing was, this was not funded in this year's budget. So I'd recommend to the superintendent that some kind of motion be made to the committee to allocate these funds for the position for April 1st moving forward. So if you approve the transfer and you approve the salary, that's within your authority.
Member Casianos?
So will the funds be, so is this a lateral, is this going to be a lateral move? I believe for this position, right?
He is currently a principal, yes.
The same salary, it's just a lateral?
It is not, because he is currently an elementary principal. And he's going to be a 6 through 12 principal. So HR looked at all of the salary scales for our middle and high school principals. It is higher than middle school-based salary, but lower than our large traditional high schools.
Other questions?
And then the funds, so Mr. McHugh, the funds that we are taking the, well, we're transferring the funds from, could you guys, what's the leftover on that?
I think it's.
Impact, excuse me.
Currently, I think it's like $700,000 sitting in that line. But that'll be also used to balance everything out at the end of the year. Should other lines on the salary move around? Because we budget for that. And it's, as you recall, we use our budget, everything's on averages. So, because it's just, we can't use actuals, because there's just so many people to kind of do that. And then people move around after we set the budget. So we use averages, if you recall. And so everything works out and it all ends up balancing out. So when we do our projections out, there's still some savings in that line, I'm projecting. Because this year it's coming in less than it has in past years.
I make a motion to authorize the school business administrator to transfer $36,750 from D-9084-1118, the long-term subsidy account, to DO-654-1105, the principal salary account.
Second.
Second. For, yeah.
Yeah, just a point of clarity. Just so I'm clear about this. If we accept this transfer, we're also accepting the salary that's on this page? Okay, thank you.
And it's a good point. And then that it would obviate the need for the executive session.
Yeah. So should we go into executive session first?
I don't think, if you approve this motion, you won't have to.
We won't need to.
Yeah.
Is there any, like comps? I guess like going back to this, is this every high school principal right now? Oh, excuse me, is this? I meant to say, so.
No, this salary is a base salary below the large high school principals.
Okay. This is a unique, obviously.
It is a unique configuration. And our high schools were looking at 1,800-plus students, right?
For this, yeah.
And this STEAM Academy CASA is not intended to go over 800 students. So the size proportionally, right, well, is not equal to one of our large traditional high schools.
Where were the comps? Like how, I just kind of just want to know what that was like. How did we come up to 147? The comps, who did we look at? How do we, I guess it's not who, but there's probably no model.
So we don't have, we only have a few middle school principals. Each of those schools has a base salary. Those are, so this position would be right between the middle school principals and below the three large high schools, including Tech.
And then my next question is, why didn't we go through a process, like a hiring process? How we, I think this was an appointment ship?
Yes, I appointed him. Howard, you want to review that?
Yeah, I spoke to the superintendent and, sorry. I think your policy changed principal selection significantly when you did that policy review with MASC. So it changed the process dramatically in terms of, I think, the search committees and the committees you had in the prior policies. So I believe the superintendent did comply, based on my conversations, with the current policy that's in effect, which is much different than your prior policy.
Yeah, I remember. So part of your appointment ship, what was the criteria? Like how was this person identified? How did we go, did we look at other principals across the district or like?
Yes, so the design team for the school took a year to design the school, as well as the job descriptions for teaching positions and the principal position.
Okay, I get it.
It involved parents, community partners, colleges and universities, as well as teachers, students. And, am I forgetting anyone, Marisol?
Stakeholders?
alum.
alum, alum, graduates, former graduates. So they came up with the actual, the description for what this principal, the qualifications, as well as what the future, you know, the requirements and outcomes. And that was also shared with all school committee members earlier this week. I shared that with Mary Jewels, and she did send that out.
With the principals, did we give like, I checked if you wanted to be, if you were interested in that position? So like, how did that?
So we looked at some of our current principals. Part of the description states that we were looking for someone that had experience in multiple areas of not only science and equity, but as well as middle and high school. And so Mr. Norkin did cover at Swamp Scott High School for a time and had a number, right? He had numerous of points on that job description that we were looking for. We didn't have other principals that quite exactly matched as closely as he did. And then we had a screening committee within our executive leadership team, along with Dr. Linda Nathan, who helped design the school. She was the founder of the Boston Arts Academy and has spent two years supporting Dr. Gardner, making sure that we're able to open the school in the fall. So that was the common recommendation, was Mr. Chris Norkin.
Awesome, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Member Casianos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is a vote to approve the school year 2526 school calendar.
Ms. Rogero is going to share the school calendar. We met with Lynn Teachers Union, and they have reviewed and approved it. But we have one minor update and change.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to your attention. So you can see the key on the bottom with the colors and what they represent. There is one mistake that we will have rectified and sent back out. As you know, our pre-K and K students start three days after the first day and end their school year three days before the rest of the school year. I mean, the other students, sorry. So on the 17th of June, it should be that orange color to represent pre-K K as their last day. So we'll have Terry Kalman correct that, and we will resend it out, should you approve this. The union is in full agreement. I will note that we made some adjustments. You'll notice that on the half-days, they're not all on Wednesdays. And that was intentional. Do you want to speak to that, Dr. Alvarez?
So when we looked at our calendar and looked at our primary drivers and goals around being inclusive of all students, we know that some of the federal holidays, right, never land on specific religious holidays for our staff and students of different faith. And so we picked some of these half-days to ensure they land on some of those holidays so that they can be released and be back home, generally when the sun sets, so that they can also practice their faith. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we moved days around to accommodate our students and staff.
And then one last note that I wanted to bring to your attention. As you may recall, our PD days in the last contract, we had five. Three at the beginning of the year, one November, one in January. We are back to two. Those days were paid out of ESAR funds. And so we're going back to the two professional development days that we had previous. So it's the day before school begins and then the November 4th date.
Questions? Yeah, Member Gailey?
I did notice that in December, the winter break goes from the 22nd to January 2nd. So they would have two weeks off.
Correct. We talked at length about that.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, and honestly, initially, we had school scheduled for the 22nd and a half-day on the 23rd. And the more we discussed it, not only in-house, but also with the union, there would be an awful lot of absences, we felt. And historically, whenever Christmas falls in the middle of the week, it tends to be a two-week break. So this is just one of those years where it's falling on a Thursday and it naturally makes it a two-week break.
I just wanted to bring it up because I know teachers and.
Yes, I'm sure the teachers will be very happy about that.
We did look at Open Architects, which gives us a pattern of data over, you know, a length of time. And the data team shared with us, we looked at days that are historically high in absences. And whenever we do a day or a half-day right before the 24th, they are very poor attendance rates for students. They almost double in number, sometimes triple on specific days around Thanksgiving and the Christmas break.
And it just leads to lost instructional time.
Yep.
For both the teacher trying to deliver when not all the students are there and the students who have missed. And, you know, it just has not been a fruitful way of us counting days for instruction. And I think it's healthy for both our students and our staff to have a good two weeks and come back eager to come back to school.
And then you can see, because of the two weeks in December, it moved the last day to the 22nd. The blue 29th is reflective of, we've added the five snow days by regulation with the Department of Ed. Every district is supposed to do that. We have not done that. We've always talked about it. You know, everyone knows it, we all understand it. But we've never put it on the calendar for some reason. We have put it on the calendar so that it is clear that do not make any vacation plans prior to the 29th, because you could, if we have snow days, go until the 29th.
If you have five snow days. Which we will not.
But just in case.
Full prediction.
There is one year that I do recall. Sorry.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the 2526 schedule with the amendment that Deputy Superintendent Rogero mentioned.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Casianos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item is a vote to submit a statement of interest to the MSBA for an accelerated repair program, project at Lynn Classical High School for roof replacement. We also have, the next item here is Ford Elementary for replacement of windows and doors. And we want to add as well, replacement of HVAC at Lynn Tech. And the reason that has been added is that the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center is running a new program that was set up by the legislature and signed by the governor to make clean energy investments in school buildings. And they're trying to get it off the ground. You know, they haven't even started yet. And we've been in touch with them, because we feel like, you know, if they're going to be doing that anywhere, they should have been doing it here. Because we have the HVAC systems that need it. And they are hoping that they would be able to provide the district, the city's match for the accelerated repair program, which would be great. Because if we got 80% from the MSBA and then the match from the Clean Energy Center, that would, that would mean that they did the whole project, which would be great for us. So we don't know that's going to, whether, that needs to be worked out. And so we're going to have to see what would come of that. But this initial step would be to do the feasibility study. There's three projects we'd like to do. Doesn't mean that MSBA will accept us for all three. They're in different categories, so they wouldn't be competing with one another. So I wanted to take them together and see if folks had questions. Because then when we do the motion, we have. we do the motion, we have, I have like a paragraph here, I got to read for each of them, and we'll try to do that. But before we do the, the motions, does anyone have any questions about the accelerated? As you know, we have been very aggressive going after these accelerated repair programs. We're, we're building a brand-new Pickering Middle School, we're opening up these other new schools, but we also have a lot of investment that is needed in our current facilities. And the accelerated repair has been, we've been successful in getting these awards. The legislature, so you, you might remember a couple of years ago, the MSBA sort of paused the program because costs were getting so high and they, they said they didn't have the funds. You know, that, that, that was something that, that you all helped us really push back on. And the legislature increased the funding to restore that program. We, we had signed on with a group of gateway cities, a lot of the older cities that are, that are in most need here. And they restored the funding to, for the program. It's that however, they changed it now to be open only every other year. Instead of having a chance to apply every year, we only, we can only apply every other year, which is another reason why we're, we're doing three at a time here. But, you know, they, they, they rank the, the projects on, on need and so, you know, we're, we're hoping that we will be, be competitive. Yep.
Is there a cap on how many times we can apply through the accelerated program?
No.
So we can pick our, whatever, so the projects, how do we identify the projects through ISD and then obviously our building capital issues that we deal with? There's a lot, so how do we, how did you narrow it down to these projects?
So there is.
Did we, sorry?
Right. There is both the, the need of the actual buildings and then, you know, the, the, the fit for the programs. So there, so there's, you know, there's a roof program, windows and doors program and an HVAC program. And then there's also limitations on which buildings are eligible depending on how old the systems are. And we also are trying to think about what is going to have the most likelihood to get sort of selected, so.
Mayor, can I give an update on something? We, the district got notified or communicated to by MSBA recently, the superintendent got a call. I returned the call to the person who made the call to us. They are going to be visiting Lynn, doing walkthroughs in all of our buildings. This is done every five to six years, MSBA. So every five or six, although one is nine years, I think it's the pandemic, they do this where they come and they walk through all the buildings and they're, they want the principal, they want a facilities person to be with them. They look at programming, they look at space, they look at the, the facility functions and operations. And so I think this is their way of kind of updating where are all of our buildings, what updates have been done, what do they look like, so that they have a good record of the shape of our building, the age of our buildings, all of that.
That's good news.
So we'll be scheduling a meeting and then scheduling dates for them to do these walkthroughs.
So they will actually see the reality of schools.
Correct, correct.
Show them the best that we've got.
Any other questions about accelerated repair?
That's pretty awesome.
So what I'm going to do, take these one at a time, having coordinated with the vice chair, I'm going to read the motion and then the vice chair is going to say so moved, and then we'll get a second and then we'll do that. Sound good?
No.
All right. Result having convened in an open meeting on February 27th, 2025, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the school committee of, of the city of Lynn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, voted to authorize superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 21st, 2025, for the Classical High School located at 235 O'Callahan Way in Lynn, Massachusetts 01905, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future replacement of the roof to maintain a watertight, energy-efficient and functioning building envelope as a prior, primary priority statement of interest for the MSBA accelerated repair program for 2025. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant of any funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city of Lynn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes, thank goodness.
Member Peña?
C.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 27th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the city of Lynn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 21st, 2025, for the Robert L. Ford Elementary School located at 49 Hollingsworth Street, Lynn, Massachusetts 01902, which describes and explains the following deficiencies for the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for the replacement of windows and doors to allow for increased security, reduction of heat loss, increased energy conservation, and overall reduced energy consumption as a secondary priority statement of interest for the MSBA accelerated repair program for 2025. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city of Lynn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 27th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the city of Lynn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 21st, 2025, for the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute located at 80 Nettoon Boulevard, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future to replace the existing failing natural gas-fired HVAC system with a heat pump system to increase energy conservation and improve overall efficiency. The existing gas-fired boilers are 1999 vintage and failing, as is the remainder of the HVAC system, which consists of equipment original to the building, as a secondary priority statement of interest for the MSBA accelerated repair program for 2025. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the secondary priority statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city of Lynn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
I think that now brings us to, thank you. I think that now brings us to communications.
Next is Rosetta Stone update and recognitions. Our chief academic officer, Patty Hebert, is going to share and reveal the exciting news of who is in the lead.
I know, it's exciting. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you.
So I included two things. One was the whole background, the rollout, all of that, the different phases that we're in and where we are at this point. And then the other is just some review of the data and celebrations. So from December to January, Tracy Elementary is in the lead. Way to go, Tracy. They have logged almost 1,000 hours of usage from December through January. So as you can see, that the charts that follow give the breakdown of how many students are currently on Rosetta Stone, families, caregivers, and then faculty and staff as well. I broke it down from January through June of '24, September through October, and here's where we are currently, November 1st through February 14th. So what an amazing increase has happened in all three categories. Oh, it's wonderful. Kids are on it, they're using it. It's been great.
Patty, can you share the languages that are being currently used?
Oh, absolutely. So currently, predominantly in the schools, it is English and Spanish that are being used a lot, even across the elementary. Some of our middle and high schools, they're using languages to support some of the classes that they're taking. So Latin is a big one that's being used, but we have Arabic, Chinese, French, Greek, Italian, Japanese, Korean, Portuguese, Filipino, Tagalog, so Latin is being used. So there are many languages available for folks. Spanish and English are the, use the most. Twenty-nine of our schools have a license, so everybody has a license right now, and 28 schools. We're working on those babies in pre-K. They're the only children that have not logged usage. We're getting there, not yet, they will.
Pretty soon, Brian.
Member Castellanos?
I love the usage, that's, that's impressive, honestly, to see that, the, the way we, the jumps, like to go from January to February, I, it's really, and, and the, the number of languages and just exposure, I think what Superintendent Alvarez just mentioned is important because it's different, right, exposures and those seeds of language acquisition moments might lead to certain pathways explorer, you, you explore, you're learning, right?
Absolutely.
What, um, I think my question is, it's, now that we've, we're working on usage, access, we're increasing those moments, how are we measuring the metrics of success? Like how are we going to, like, you know, if you take Spanish class, you get evaluated in a, in a classroom, so how are we, how are we measuring the success of the program?
Yep, that's a great question.
Language program.
And that's where we're at this year with it being the first year of full implementation. We want to look at the usage and how it correlates to how they're doing overall in classes, on the MCAS, access. That's something that we are working on. The Rosetta Stone data platform is not that user-friendly, so we are partnering with the data center right now to see, is Open Architects the way to go? Well, we can drill down to every single student. You can't really do that on the Rosetta Stone platform without putting in the student's name and it's, it's really not user-friendly in that way. So we will have more, probably next year, I'd say. It's going to take some time to get the platforms to talk and see if that is the best way to go.
I was going to, I just, even student feedback, staff feedback, family feedback, any type of feedback or any type of, because we're customers, customer, obviously, like any type, good, the bad, the ugly, the great, the.
And we've done a lot of informal with our schools, but we are planning on doing a survey for all of our families, for our students, and for our faculty and staff as well. And it's constantly being pushed out as reminders to get on Rosetta Stone. We have this amazing platform for everyone to use, so that's happening.
The next steps we're taking are just pulling our reports by school so that we can work with principals and working with the MLE team to look at all of our L1s and L2s to make sure that, you know, it's really not optional for them to use, right? We need to have opportunities through, for, for them to be able to either before or after school, to be able to use and do the language acquisition because we know they have to practice at least five hours on top of the time that they spend in school learning English.
It's a big commitment.
Yeah, it's worth it.
Just had a small question. And thank you for the update. We're getting regular updates with the Rosetta Stone. You, you were mentioning the languages, I didn't hear Kamai, is Kamai one of the languages?
It is a language, yes. These are the top languages being used at this point, but there is usage, yes.
Kamai, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have in communications, the net school spending letter. Mr. McHugh is going to review to give you an update of a letter I received on February 10th from Desi.
Yes, every year we do the state report and this is the letter, you know, just telling us how we did. So in FY '24, which was really the big year, we were over net school spending by like $1.2 million, which is very good. So it shows the partnership between the city and us, working together to get over it as in, you know, years past, quite a few years before this mayor, we had some issues in the past, but you can see those have been rectified and we're heading in the right direction. You'll also see in the second par, third paragraph down, it does talk that we're a little short projected this year, that's just a projection. I've already talked to the city CFO and I have to make some adjustments because the city, health insurance and the pensions are projected $2 million more than what we anticipated. So that most likely put us over again by, you know, 1.0, you know, like $7 million over by the end of the year of the net school spending amount. So we're in good shape, you know, we'll continue to work together through this process.
Thank you, Mr. McHugh. I just want to add that I really appreciate everyone's partnership. This, this was a very painful issue for us several years ago and it is, it is incredibly complicated the way that they, they define net school spending and the timing they, they calculate it. And in, 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 in the midst of all this, you know, the city's in a, under extreme financial pressures and the school department's dealing with the disappearance of, of ESER funding and, and has financial pressures of its own. It requires a lot of coordination to, 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 to sort of land these numbers where they are. You know, 1, 1 million's a lot, a lot of money, but as I've said, it's pretty, it's pretty small. And, you know, for, for, I think it also requires a lot of, you know, trust from, from, from all of us as, as colleagues because, because of the time it takes for, for us to like get these numbers back. But I just appreciate working with everyone because I think we're, we're, we're gotten into a pretty good groove here. We're, we're hitting these numbers the way we want them to and I, and I just, I appreciate everyone's effort to, to coordinate that and make that happen, so.
Thank you.
You too, Mayor. Can I say something?
Yep.
Like I recall when I first got on the committee with Mayor Nicholson and we were struggling with those numbers and we were behind with those numbers and to be this close and to do this well, the rest of, like, the committee members that have been on with me, serve with me, know that this is really important and that what a great job they're doing between the superintendent and the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And, and our CFO, a, a big part of this is communication and, and our CFO has been really committed to staying in touch with the, the business manager and that's what I mean. It, it, we're all the same team here and it requires that, that back and forth and everyone's doing a great job on that, so I appreciate it.
And lastly, this evening, I want to begin by expressing my sincere appreciation to everyone who advocated for the preservation of funds for Lynn Public Schools in response to the proposed charter school expansion. The collaborative efforts of Mayor Nicholson, school committee, state delegation, elected officials, the Lynn Teachers Union, administrators, teachers, students and parents demonstrated a strong and unified commitment to our public schools. We are all grateful that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education carefully considered the data needed to support a proven provider and voted in our favor. We recognize both our progress and our challenges that lie ahead and we remained more committed than ever to advancing our district. Our students and families deserve a bright future and we are dedicated to supporting them every step of the way. In our schools, we proudly celebrated Black History Month by honoring the achievements, contributions and rich cultural heritage of black individuals throughout history and Lynn's history. Through engaging curriculum, meaningful discussions and events, we will continue to provide students with opportunities to learn about the profound impact of black leaders, artists, scientists and activists. Black history is American history and we remain committed to ensuring that its lessons and legacy are recognized and celebrated year-round. In fact, the social studies departments at our high schools are excited to teach advanced placement, African-American history next school year. Very, very, very excited about that. This month's report highlights both recently completed initiatives and exciting upcoming plans. As we continuously seek to implement best practices, our social, emotional learning and diversity.
"Resolved having convened in an open meeting on February 27th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the city of Lynn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 21st, 2025, for the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute located at 80 Neptune Boulevard, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future to replace the existing failing natural gas-fired HVAC system with a heat pump system to increase energy conservation and improve overall efficiency. The existing gas-fired boilers are 1999 vintage and failing, as is the remainder of the HVAC system, which consists of equipment original to the building, as a secondary priority statement of interest for the MSBA accelerated repair program for 2025, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the secondary priority statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city of Lynn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority."
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. "Problem having convened in an open meeting on February 27th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the city of Lynn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 21st, 2025, for the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute located at 80 Neptune Boulevard, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future to replace the existing failing natural gas-fired HVAC system with a heat pump system to increase energy conservation and improve overall efficiency. The existing gas-fired boilers are 1999 vintage and failing, as is the remainder of the HVAC system, which consists of equipment original to the building, as a secondary priority statement of interest for the MSBA accelerated repair program for 2025, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the secondary priority statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city of Lynn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority."
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. "Problem having convened in an open meeting on February 27th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the city of Lynn, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 21st, 2025, for the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute located at 80 Neptune Boulevard, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future to replace the existing failing natural gas-fired HVAC system with a heat pump system to increase energy conservation and improve overall efficiency. The existing gas-fired boilers are 1999 vintage and failing, as is the remainder of the HVAC system, which consists of equipment original to the building, as a secondary priority statement of interest for the MSBA accelerated repair program for 2025, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the secondary priority statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city of Lynn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority."
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. "Problem having convened in an open meeting on February 27th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the city of Lynn, in accordance with its charter,